Good evening. Good evening and welcome to our forum for the Kansas City, Missouri City Council, Fourth and Fifth in District Candidates in the April 4th Primary Election. This forum is sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Kansas City, Jackson, Clay and Platt Counties, and the local Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Social Justice Committees. I am Anitra Steele and I am a member of this league. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization. We neither support nor oppose candidates or parties. Our mission is to empower voters and to defend our democracy. We envision a democracy where every student, citizen has the knowledge, the right, the desire and the confidence to participate. Our membership is open to everyone. I'd like for you to know all the other league members volunteering with me. Misty Jaeger is the timekeeper and our Zoom is monitored by Dave Montjoy and Terry Lane. I lead the forum's administration team. The public has sent in questions via our Zoom link or via our league's website, L W V K C dot org. Tonight, we welcome Christelle Bell, Fox Four News Anchor as our guest moderator. Welcome, Christelle.
Thank you so much for having me. I'm excited to be here. I am delighted to join you for this Kansas City Council Forum tonight and just want to let you know that I probably will just tip out a little earlier as I do have to wake up at 3:00 AM to do the morning newscast for Fox Four News AM. So with that being said, we'll get started. Your vote matters. And again, tonight, we're going to learn about the candidates for Kansas City Council on April 4th ballot. Who, along with the Kansas City Mayor, set the overall policy and budget for Kansas City, Missouri? So that's important to note. So our council members serve a four-year term. The city is divided into six districts and there are six at-large districts. This makes up for a total of 12 council members and the mayor. So every voter in Kansas City votes for seven council members, their own council member and the six at-large seats. So this forum will last about 90 minutes and I'll ask each candidate the same question, selected from the submitted questions that will come, that will provide it from the public. These questions will be random and the order of candidate responses will be determined by random rotation. So each candidate will be given 90 seconds to respond to each question and two minutes for a closing statement. And all of the candidates running for these offices have been invited. And so at this time, I would like to welcome, we have four candidates that are participating in tonight's forum. So candidates running for District Number Four, Eric Bunch. He'll just wave on the camera right there. Thank you so much. Chrissy Dastro. Thank you so much. And also Mr. Henry Rizzo, which of whom I have not seen. Running for District Five unopposed is Rihanna Park Shaw. Just give us a wave there. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. Again, this forum will be recorded and it will be available on the league's webpage and you can find that webpage at L W V K C dot org. Candidates, please answer the question asked and stick to topic because that's important. And there will be no rebuttals in this forum tonight, but you may go back to address an issue during your two-minute closing remarks. But again, no rebuttals tonight, but you will have the opportunity to address that during your two-minute closing. And with that being said, let us begin. We'll start with this one. I think this might be a little easy for all of you. Please introduce yourself. Tell us a little bit about your background and what top priorities as a council member are for you. And at this time, we will start with Mr. Bunch and then move on to Ms. Dastro. And then we'll follow by Ms. Park Shaw.
Great, thank you. Hi, my name is Eric Bunch. For those of you who don't know me, I am currently the, the city councilperson for the Fourth in District seat and, and wrapping up my first term and I'm running for reelection. And you know, it, the question that I get asked a lot is, is the city council or what you expected? This is my first elected office and I'm, you know, proud to be serving the Fourth District. But of course it's not. It was totally different because we didn't know seven months into our term that we would, we would have one of the greatest health crises that this country has ever seen. But despite that, I think we persevered as a city council and got a lot of great things done. And so I want to continue to work on things like housing and, and public transportation, which I've been a big champion of, was the, the leader to, the, the, the lead sponsor and the, the architect of the, of zero fare public transportation. We managed to get a streetcar expanded. We just opened the, the, the new KCI Airport Terminal. So a lot of big things still happened during this term. And as the Vice Chair of the Transportation and Infrastructure Operations Committee, I've been really proud of the work that we've done on, on those issues. But I really look forward to having a, a second, a second term to continue to, to work on those because we have some unfinished business. We have a lot of affordable housing to continue to build. We've got to expand public transportation, not just make it zero fare. And, and we've, we've got to continue to make big strides on climate investment because the, because the, the climate change really is our biggest, biggest challenge facing us in the future. So look forward to spending as a, as a full-time city councilperson. Look forward to continuing that work over the next four years.
Ms. Dastro.
Hello, everyone. My name is Chrissy. I am a mother of four. I have two science degrees, but took a hard ride into community work shortly after I graduated Eastern Virginia Medical School. I have been an educator in public schools and also served on school boards. I have a background in Kansas City from being a community advocate and also from being the founder of Truce Market Collective. We do Truce to Palooza every year, bringing communities east and west of Truce together over our historic dividing line. And we feel that's really important to empower our communities. We also, we also did the Black Lives Matter murals during the summer of George Floyd's death. And we also work with Art Garden KC, supporting local creatives and makers. I have a heart for creatives, I guess you can tell. I've been planning to run for, for city council for probably about eight years. I was very inspired by Jan Markison and Cindy Circo, who I was able to serve with on the Streetcar Board. I was one of the Sly Jameses appointees to the Streetcar Extension Board. And I really, through, through working with them, I thought, you know what? I've got a lot of skills, but I haven't always known where to point them toward. And now I finally know, and this is what I want to do. So I went to City Hall and worked, uh, serving the people of the Fourth District for two years during COVID. I've organized mass drives, food drives, the World War One COVID Memorial. And really, I, I really loved being able to work in the communities, even though we were all going through so much. And it was then that I realized how important our communities and our neighborhoods are to the success of our city. And I got to see the hard work and beautiful dedication from people all outside of City Hall. And I thought that it was time that we did a little bit better job for them and decided that I would run for city council because I think that our, our Fourth District residents deserve a really engaged leader who is in the community, working with the community members. City council people get paid $70,000 a year and that's more money than just voting in legislative session or committee. So I decided to run because I think that we deserve a full-time council person who's really invested in the community.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bunch, as well. In for District Five, Rihanna Park Shaw. Please tell us again, tell us about yourself, introduce and give us a little background about what are your top priorities as council member?
Well, good evening, everyone. I am Fifth District Councilwoman Reyna Park Shaw and I am excited to be here. First, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for putting this on. Definitely you all stay in the forefront of ensuring that voters are educated and aware of the top issues and candidates. So thank you for that. Thank you also to Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, of which I'm a, a proud member of the sorority and also a proud member of the Greater Kansas City Chapter of the Links. I am serving my first term, running for reelection this year and have really been committed to what I call my Five Alive Program, which I will continue to focus on the Five Alive Initiatives. Affordable Housing, Livability, Infrastructure, Violence Prevention and Economic Development. Those five areas, the neighbors, the voters have told me that that are the pri, those are the priorities that you want us to focus on. And so those are the priorities that I will continue to focus on. I think we've made some great strides in my first year, but we are not done. We've got more work yet to do. So I look forward to continuing in those areas and working to empower the votes, the voice of the neighborhoods. I look forward to answering your questions tonight. Thank you so much for having me on.
All right, thank you. I want to remind our candidates that you do have a two-minute limit and at this time, we'll continue, but also just be mindful of the timer that is on your screen. If you can see that time, I don't have a problem with interrupting you to stop you, okay? And I mean that in the nicest way possible. Okay, so let's move on to our next question. We thank all of our candidates for the introduction for themselves. Thank you. If the Royals are successful in building a new downtown ballpark, the value of homes nearby will increase. What do you suggest to reduce the impact of the increased property taxes on long-time residents? And bonus question, yes or no, are you in favor of a downtown ballpark? And we'll start this off leading backwards with Ms. Park Shaw.
Okay, that is a definitely a loaded question. I think the, the first answer to that, well, I'll, I'll start with the latter. I'll be honest, I don't know that I have, have enough information to say that I am 100% for having a downtown ballpark. Definitely, I think it can create some opportunity for Kansas City and create, you know, definitely jobs and economic development is huge, a huge opportunity there. But I think I would need a little bit more information. And at this time, I haven't been at those, at those particular tables to, to be able to say specifically, without a doubt, that I would be 100% for it. I'm leaning that way. In terms of opportunities for, to handle the tax increase taxes for homeowners, you know, there are definitely, definitely quite a few tools in the toolbox that we may be able to utilize, one of which I think could be, we may, if, if we're talking about those homeowners that are living in the immediate area, definitely we may be able to do some sort of a tax abatement or a freeze on their taxes. It, as it pertains to that, we could also look at a potential community benefit agreement that may assist some of those homeowners that live in the, in the immediate, in that surrounding area. But definitely, I think there's a lot more investigating and due diligence that needs to be done. Thank you.
All right, we'll now move to Ms. Dastro.
Thank you. So I had the great fortune of growing up in rural Arkansas and we did not have major sporting teams. I wouldn't say that I have any kind of dead-set opinion onto how we should do our ballfields in Kansas City. But what I've been a, made a, what I've made a point to do is to ask the people that I've been talking to in the communities and just ask them what they think. And, you know, eight times out of 10, folks are not super excited about it. And these are folks who've lived in Kansas City who are big Royals fans. And so I am very much in support of what the community wants and I will represent the people of the Fourth District and I will ask them what they want. I will ask them if they want to vote on this and I believe most of them would want to vote on this. But your premise was if this is a, if this is a thing, how do we, how do we protect people? So I've done some, you know, research on what has happened to communities around downtown baseball fields that have come in in different cities. And it seems like there's a pretty much a concentric circle of rings of impact. Not only do we need to make sure that we keep people in their homes, which we could do by protecting, protecting their, their taxing, or protecting their, their pocketbooks by preventing tax increases from pricing them out of their neighborhoods and causing gentrification around that area. But I think that we should also go a little bit further. And if there is going to be development around this area, we also need affordable housing units. We absolutely need to be able to house the people who will work at this baseball stadium. And we need to prioritize small business to go into the commercial and retail areas at also rents that are affordable. Because if we're not going to have been, okay, is, is it the, is it the LWV that goes stuck? Because the first time I saw it go red and do stop, but now it's not.
It's on stop right now.
Okay, I think that I'm, I need to expand. Okay, I'm going to expand my window because I, okay, I see it now. Thank you so much. I couldn't, I, it was, it was in a, in a different window.
Okay, all right, let's give Mr. Bunch the floor right now. Do you need me to repeat the question?
No, I don't think so. But I, I, I don't see the timer now myself, but.
It has not started yet.
Great. There we go. Awesome, thank you so much. The, the answer to the, to the, to the latter question is, you know, I think, I think a lot of people love to see a baseball stadium. I'd love to see a baseball stadium downtown, but I think that we've got to make sure that, that it does not come on the financial backs of the taxpayers of Kansas City, Missouri. It's the right location and there's a, an ironclad community benefits agreement. So we have to make sure that this actually is something that, that, that benefits the broader community. And most importantly, we need to make sure that it doesn't harm the community. And, and one major way that was just brought up is the potential for rising, rising costs of property taxes as the, as a community, community becomes more desirable. And I will say that we have already done something very similar to what I would propose in the adjacent area called the Chapter 353 Plan. We did it in the West Side, the neighborhood that is facing the most, the biggest threats of gentrification. But basically, we are, if you can afford your tax bill, you're going to pay for part of it. If you cannot afford your tax bill based on, based on income, that program is allowing those who can't afford to pay their taxes, their property tax assessments, and it's going into a minor home repair program. So that those who can't afford to fix up their home and pay their taxes, they're not only getting a lower tax bill, but they're also getting minor home repair funds as well. It's a great program that's going to, already having great success in the West Side and it's something that we can replicate elsewhere.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bunch. All right, moving on to our next question. What guidelines will you adhere to in making T I F, T I F decisions? And Ms. Dastro, we can start off with you this time, if you don't mind kicking us off with this question.
Absolutely, I have a lot of thoughts on incentives. I think that incentives are powerful tools that, back in the day, when we were really at a deficit for development, were, you know, used very broadly to, to obtain goals. I feel like we as a city are at a much different point now and we have to readjust how we look at tax incentives. I feel like currently, it feels like we're very reactionary. It doesn't seem like we have comprehensive plans, strategic plans for what kind of development we'd like to see when we're handing out money. And so I think that we really need to not only talk about affordable housing requirements, but also what, what would we consider big wins for our communities and which communities? The Community Benefit Agreement needs to be something that is, I would say, the broad, the, the broad part of the incentives. And so working with communities and figuring out how, how we can use tax incentives to truly benefit a community where a developer is benefiting from that community. We have to make sure that the community is benefiting because they are giving things up and they are also feeling like, you know, maybe they're not getting much out of a lot of these developments. And so I think that it should be required for developers to really provide what is valuable to the communities they benefit from. And we cannot do that without adequate and pre-planned community engagement, rolling forward strategies with the community instead of doing development to communities.
All right, we'll give the floor to Ms. Park Shaw right now.
Thank you. So I have definitely took a stance in, in my first term in wanting to look at, look at our tax incentives differently. Serving as the Vice Chair of the T I F Commission, it is definitely been important to me to ensure that we are not incentivizing these deals off the backs of our kids. And unfortunately, I think there were in years past, some projects that have been done, have been established off the backs of our kids. And so I've definitely served in an integral role in leading legislation to help us to redesign the way that we do our incentives. Going forward, one of the areas that I, that I would love to see us continue to, or to see us start working on is the clawbacks. Unfortunately, in some of the T I F deals that occurred previously, we didn't have, they weren't set aside with adequate clawbacks where, as if the developer doesn't meet their specific end of the bargain, that then the, the, the city or Tax Increment Financing Commission has an ability to be able to go back and hold them accountable for that. So moving forward, I would like to see us ensure that our T I F deals actually have clawbacks in them and that we're able to hold those developers accountable when they are not meeting their specific deliverables. Thank you.
Last but not least, Mr. Bunch.
Thank you. For those of you who might not be familiar with the Economic Development Incentives, the, the Kansas City Beacon has a, has an article that just came out today or yesterday, kind of demystifying and defining some of these terms that you're hearing. But, so tax incentives regardless of whether it's a T I F or an abatement or exemption. I've got three things that, that we've started working on and need to, need to finish. Every project that comes, every developer, whether it's housing or, or, or manufacturing or commercial space, needs to pass two tests. The first test should absolutely be, I require this for some of the incentives, but not all, should be a financial analysis conducted by a third party. If you, it should be able to tell you whether or not that incentive deal, that that development needs that incentive. Oftentimes, we don't know that. We don't know if it needs, it's called the BUT-4 test. And so everything should pass that and, and also tell us what they intend to use the tax incentives for. Secondly, we need to agree upon what we want out of this. So do we want more affordable housing? Do we want more manufacturing? Do you want more white-collar jobs? And we need to be answering those questions as well, as well as transitory development or, or environmental climate change policy development that, that helps us achieve those goals. And lastly, we need to end the, the incentive shopping that continues to happen by having all of the incentive agencies actually sign on to those same exact policies. And that's something that, that we're working on, something that we will fulfill in the next few years.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to our next question and just to give you a reminder that these questions are all generated from our public and they came from our public. So moving on, in your opinion, what is the biggest threat to small businesses in Kansas City? And what are they facing? What are small businesses, the biggest threat that small businesses are facing? And what will you do to strengthen our city's small business community? Two questions there. And we can start off that question with Mr. Bunch.
Sure thing. From what I've heard from small businesses and, and, and there's so many different types of small businesses that, that the answer may be a little bit different than, than, than everyone else. But it's often red tape. It's red tape at City Hall is, is one of the biggest challenges with, whether it's zoning or getting their business license or sometimes being able to even pay their taxes. It, it becomes difficult. And so one thing that I would propose and that I'm hoping to propose in an amendment to the, to the budget that is in draft right now is to expand the, the capacity of Biz KC Biz Care. So our one-stop shop, almost concierge service for, for small businesses. The other thing that I hear a lot is, is lack of financing and lack of, of financial support. And unlike some of our peer cities, we are not investing in our small businesses in the way that we should be. We should be investing as an actual investor. There are great models for that in other cities. But also just providing grants and low-interest loans or, or just, just direct financial support for so many of our businesses. We know that small businesses make up a, a huge share of the employment of the workforce here. And as a matter of, of, of continued growth, it continues to be one of the largest areas of growth for, for, for jobs. And so we want to continue to support that. So direct financial assistance to small businesses and continued expansion of KC Biz Care to make sure that the folks get the support they need from the city to cut that red tape.
All right, Ms. Dastro, you?
I think that the biggest thing we can do to our small business or for our small business is to listen to them. Our small business owners have been crying to City Hall, just begging them to support them in many ways. And they've outlined very specifically what that looks like. I, it would take longer than two minutes to go over it all, so let me try to compartmentalize this. First of all, we have different levels of small business owners. We have startup entrepreneurs. We have a lot of young creatives, a lot of people who are starting restaurants or starting different types of businesses who are younger and they're a startup brand. Then we have mid-sized businesses who have retail, brick and mortar, and then so on and so forth. The more successful you are, the more that you can have space and, and, and a growing business. But getting them started and getting them off the ground. Currently, we have a very, a very blunt tool and we are, we are forcing all of these small business owners to adhere to the same processes that we would a large, successful business. So when we're looking at all of the different hoops that they jump through, whether it's the Health Department, the Planning Department, or, or even applying for WB, WNBE status, these are very laborious processes. And we've got to be meeting these small businesses where they are, the same way we have to meet residents at different, of different means where they are. So we need to be looking at them as the diverse, beautiful ecosystem that they are and not everybody needs the same thing.
All right, thank you. Last but not least, Ms. Park Shaw.
Yes, thank you. As a small business owner, definitely I have, feel the struggles and challenges that many small business owners do. And so I have been able to leverage that experience with many of the opportunities that are out in our community. So for one, actually introduce the legislation to take half a million dollars of our American Rescue Plan Fund, leverage that with additional dollars from the philanthropic community, funds that we receive from Kaufman Foundation to create access to capital for our, and resources, capital and resources for the small businesses so that we can meet them where they are, whether they're a startup or a long-time struggling business that needed help through the pandemic. And then taking that, not just for today, but what I would love to see Kansas City do and what I'm working on is creating an ecosystem and infrastructure that will be here from here on out so that they can continue to have access to capital, access to resources, you know, that they don't typically have access to. And I would love for Kansas City to start thinking about and looking at their small businesses, just like we do our big businesses. Those incentives that we give to our big companies, we can do those with our small companies as well. Kansas City in the past has not looked at small businesses as an investment. And I would love to see us change that frame of mind so that we can start investing in our small businesses because they do create more jobs and, and will boost our economy as well. Thank you.
All right, the next question. What are your ideas, as we've seen quite a bit in Kansas City, in, in terms of violence? So what are your ideas about implementing conflict resolution programs to reduce violence in our community? To begin that question, I will go to you, Ms. Park Shaw.
Okay, you're talking my language. We are working on this right now. Actually, I have, for the last, since May of last year, meet every week with a group called KC360, focusing on a model that was evidence-based. Data has been collected there in Omaha, who was able to reduce their violent crimes by 27%. Their homicides by 27%. And ultimately, just to, to tell you, they had 30 homicides last year to our 169 here in Kansas City. So utilizing that model, as well as our blueprint for violence prevention, to help reduce. So utilizing that model, uh, as well as our blueprint for violence prevention to help reduce crime. Conflict resolution, we actually are working in this group on a strategy to do a train the trainer model where we actually are training those, uh, mom and pops, those individuals, those, uh, neighborhood leaders in the community, how to training them with the conflict resolution skills so that they can then work within their community to help, uh, reduce, uh, the conflict. And, uh, you may have seen on the news, we actually tomorrow will be debating a thirty million dollar investment in violence prevention. Councilman Bunch and I, uh, and eight others co-sponsored this legislation to, for thirty million dollars over the next five years to implement programs just like that. And many others at the community-based level to really work on preventing our crime. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Dastrop, let's go to you.
Thank you. Um, I also, uh, have a really, um, a huge passion for mental health in our community. I think that when it comes to violent crime and, um, conflict resolution, there's prevention, which I believe we could be doing a lot more through our health department, education on access to mental health resources outside of a therapist needs to be a priority because not everybody has access to a therapist. We really need to be looking at how we can break this down into bite-sized information and, and really educate the public through whatever means we can, so that there are, they have the tools to deal with issues and, um, trauma, anger, um, emotional, um, when, when emotions overcome people, it's very, it's very difficult. So there are tools that are proven and, and science-backed that, that can decrease those, those impulses. I also think that it's very important that we have, if we're having a new jail, we need to be having a rehabilitation area to where people come out of that detainment, um, with some new skills. Um, reentry program, reentry is a huge passion of mine when people, whether people are coming out of a detention center or out of a prison. Reentering into society is much easier when you have, you know, a toolkit and you're at a better place at dealing with these types of things than you were to begin with. And if the city's going to put money into a new detention center, we have to demand that they do rehabilitative services so that we're actually stopping these cycles of, of violence.
So I just want to make sure I'm clear. As far as implementing conflict resolution programs, is there any ideas that you have as far as with that, or is it just?
Yes, I think that we should, no, I think that we should be absolute, I think that we should be leveraging our health department and their ability to proliferate the community with tools and with, um, training and with, um, therapy that doesn't cost forty dollars an hour. We've got to find a way to meet people where they are with the resources that prevent conflict and prevent violence. And we have an entire health department that we should be leveraging for that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bunch.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, uh, Councilwoman Park Shaw, uh, did, I think, a fantastic job of summing up my position because I'm a co-sponsor of, of the ordinance that she worked very hard on to, uh, to, to, to invest thirty million dollars into prevention, crime prevention. It's something that we've never done before. Uh, we continue to, um, be beholden by a state that, uh, insists on us spending a certain amount of our budget on, on reactionary policing. I'm a supporter of, of having, uh, law enforcement in this community. However, um, uh, we, the model is not, does not help with prevention. Um, but conflict resolution, uh, is, is a central part of that, but trauma-informed care, uh, providing mental health services, mentorship to, to young men and women, um, who are at risk of, of violence. And investing in, in affordable housing is, is key to this. And so, uh, a thirty million dollar investment in crime prevention will go a very, very, very far, long way. Um, as they, as they say, uh, uh, ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. And I believe that this, this model, um, that we are borrowing from in Omaha is going to be something that can be replicated here and I think highly successful. But we've got to invest in prevention and, and central to that will be conflict resolution along with other trauma-informed care to help folks understand and, and, and process their, their complex feelings and emotions in a non-violent way.
Thank you. Well, speaking of law enforcement, we'll continue, uh, this conversation. Start in me. Can, can everyone hear me? Okay, heard an echo for a second. Wanted to make sure. Okay, so we'll continue along the lines of law enforcement. This question. Diversity of the Kansas City Police Department and Fire Departments has been an issue. What more can be done to change the cultures in these city departments to allow a greater mix of citizens to serve? And for that question to start us off, I'll come to you first, Ms. Dastro.
Thank you. Um, so I was actually just talking to a friend of mine who's an international consultant for law enforcement and how to make, um, how to make police departments and community policing better. Um, he, he was really able to share a lot with me that I didn't know about the recruiting processes that are used through, um, local police departments. Um, I think that it starts there. I think that the, the folks that you're attracting into a police department, you need to be, um, instead of advertising, come be a policeman who is, you know, um, got your gun and your, your bulletproof vest. But how do we reframe this as community peacekeepers so that we're attracting people who want to come and do good in the community instead of joining the local military? Um, so I think that how we're recruiting has a lot to do with that, also where we're recruiting. If we're, if we're putting out the right message and we're going to places where we are recruiting people of color, recu- recruiting people from different cultures or people from the LGBTQIA community, we really have to make sure that a broad net is being cast and that the right message is being put out. Now, once we do that, we need for it to be that on the inside as well. So I, I'm very much in favor of really kind of looking at, uh, you know, toe-to-tip the culture within the police department and, and really setting some goals and creating new standards that are being implemented through training and through ongoing psychological support for the men and women who put their lives at risk and do very hard things for us every single day.
Mr. Bunch.
Yeah, thank you. Um, it, it's a challenge. Uh, we, we, I think, are making strides on diversifying our workforce in the police department and the fire department. Um, but we, we still hear, we still hear stories about discrimination that happens, uh, within, in particular, right now. It's, uh, making some news is the fire department. Um, we have to ensure that, that there is a culture of, of zero tolerance for discrimination and we know it is happening. We know that discrimination is happening on the basis of race and gender in the fire department. Uh, we've taken, I think, some pretty, pretty bold steps, um, in, in making sure that, that, that there is a clear policy and a process for whistleblowing or for reporting grievances. Um, and that those, those perpetrators are being held accountable. Um, that's the kind of the rough side of things right now with the fire department. Um, still some, a lot of work to go, but we've hired some outside resources to help us clean up that, that culture that has been allowed to persist for a while. Um, and until we fix that, we are not going to be a successful recruiting diverse, uh, di- diverse workforce. Um, on the police department side, we're a little challenged there. As many of you may know, we have a state-run police department. Um, but I think having the mayor as a member of that police board of commissioners, uh, was something that was instrumental in getting the, I believe, the first woman ever, uh, to head up the, the, as the chief of police. I think that is going to go a long way, uh, to making sure that diversity is valued. Um, and that the community is policed by a, a, a law enforcement law, uh, force who really truly represents the community that they're, that they're, uh, serving.
Okay, Ms. Park Shaw.
Thank you. Uh, excellent question. I think it's a different answer, uh, for both of the departments. Uh, but I think, you know, it is, while recruitment is a part of it, um, we actually took some steps. Uh, it, the city council from the fire department side of it to try to, uh, we, uh, set out an RP to try to, to change the company that, uh, was doing the, the hiring process. Uh, and I think we've seen some success there. Uh, obviously not enough, just given, uh, not enough fast enough, if you ask me. And so I think we need to take it a step further, which is, uh, what we will continue to work on, uh, in the coming months in terms of, uh, trying to, uh, recruit, uh, individuals that are within the community that, so that we can have, uh, diverse, uh, workforce in the fire department as well as the police department. But I think when I say the answer is different for both, you know, the police department, let's be honest, you know, there's, we've got to build some trust. They have to build some trust within the community. Uh, it's very hard to say that we're gonna, we will, will hire, have a diverse workforce when, uh, we're arresting half of them, you know, and they're, they're put, put in jail. You, so you, you reduce the, your, the population that you're able to hire when they're not there. And so I think it'd be, it, you know, the work comes with us, uh, investing into the community and trying to, to start young, start when they're young and build up those individuals. And then one thing I will say is we did hire a chief equity officer, which will help with diversity and equity in the city and, uh, utilizing that position, which she's just been here four months, uh, to continue to help us come up with recommendations on how to improve the diversity in the city. Thank you. That ninety seconds goes fast.
I know, I know. Alrighty. Well, you guys are doing great. Thank you so much. You're doing great. Okay, so we're moving on. Um, and this is allowing us to get a lot of questions in from our public, which is great too. Um, so let's talk about, um, bike lanes. This has been a big topic, right, lately? So the city has apparently spent a lot of money on bike lanes, which have limited street parking and can be confusing. Um, in quotes, not to mention dangerous for some drivers. Yet I hardly see anyone using these bike lanes. How much more money should be invested in this project which seem, which seems, excuse me, to benefit only a few? And we'll start reverse with Ms. Park Shaw to answer that, to start that, uh, question off with answer.
Thank you. I think, uh, when I think of bike lanes, you know, um, I, I look at it maybe a little different in that, um, you know, the Kansas City's fifth district has three of the highest fatality, uh, intersections in the city. There's the, the top, out of the top five, three of there are in the fifth district. And, uh, with the complete streets, uh, process in terms of, or vi- and vis- which includes Vision Zero. Um, one aspect of that, uh, of being able to slow the traffic down and make it more safe is to, uh, narrow the line, narrow it and put bike lanes. So it's not just about the bike lanes themselves. But I think, um, you know, the, the biggest thing frustration that I believe I'm hearing from the public is in regards to, to, uh, not, not being engaged in the, in the, uh, and get, not being, not engaging the public in that process. And so I think just ensuring that we engage, continue to engage the, the public in that process as we are looking to do a complete streets process, uh, or add ba- bike lanes, whatever the, those steps are. We need to make sure we're talking and empowering the voice of the neighborhoods and of the residents so that they can be at the decision-making table. I think that is the key to ensuring that, uh, we move along, move forward together as a, as one city rather than bits and pieces. I will say, uh, my district, Marlboro Communities led their bike lane process from start to finish. And I haven't heard any complaints. Thank you.
We'll go to you, Mr. Bunch.
Yeah, I, uh, as a regular user of the bike facilities that we have built in the fourth district and, and some degree in some of the other districts, I, I'm, I'm supportive of bike facilities, bike lanes, trails, what, what have you as just a one piece of a broader, uh, transportation system. Uh, yeah, transportation is, is different for everyone. I happen to be a person who bikes. There are a lot of people who do. Um, but it really is, it's a tool, a bike lane is a, is a tool to change our environment to make it more accessible for people, uh, who may not have access to a car. And, and parts of my district and actually my neighborhood, uh, about thirty percent of households don't have access to a car. And so we have to continue to, to invest in things that make it more po- make it possible for people to get around, uh, to get to public transportation, to get to, to walk to the grocery store, um, to, to maybe hop on a bike and, 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 and ride it someplace. It's not for, biking isn't necessary for everyone, but it is a bigger part of a bigger conversation and a bigger transportation policy. Um, uh, Councilwoman Park Shaw rightfully mentioned, um, our Vision Zero policy and our Complete Streets policy. Uh, we recognize that, again, a, a bike facility or, or, or road diets or sidewalks or lots of other things are, are often tools used to help make our streets safer. Um, I want to build a community where my kids can get out and, and explore their community and, uh, and, uh, complete, strong Complete Streets policy and strong Vision Zero policy are helping us get there.
Ms. Dastro.
Um, I think it's important that communities drive the priorities of their investment. Um, I think that we have a lot of money that, um, is available to improve neighborhoods and improve communities. And usually they know how they would like those improvements to go. Lots of sidewalks, um, streets, uh, things that you would expect from an infrastructure standpoint. Um, and I think it's unwise for politicians to take very narrow agendas into city hall and implement them without consulting the community, especially when you are spending a lot of money and there are other priorities in those communities. So I very much believe that community should be able to have a, the, the loudest voice and, and the voice in how we spend dollars in their areas. And if bikes, bike lanes are something that they are wanting and they are requesting, then that's great. But we have to know that first. Um, communities feel very left out and othered when we're not consulting with them about spending a lot of money on things that they might not find as valuable or as useful as other things. And so again, the closer we are to our communities and our neighborhoods, the more we know what our communities need to feel invested in and to feel valued and to feel like, uh, their community matters to the people representing them. So it asks, it always has to start with the community first.
All right. We're moving along here. Um, just earlier today, it was reported that there was a house fire and it claimed the life of a homeless person. So this question says, what ideas can you bring to the city council on the homeless? And, uh, we'll start off with Ms. Dastro for that. We'll go to Ms. Park Shaw and then we'll end with Mr. Bunch on this question.
Thank you. Um, so during my time at city hall, um, calls on homelessness were the number one call into the, into the office where I worked. Um, and I recognized that it was not just by a little, by a lot. This is a hu- the, the, our, our unhoused residents, not only are they suffering without assistance and without adequate resources, they are living lives that, um, are, are really quite unbelievable. Um, and we just don't have the resources outside of city hall to be able to provide transition out of this situation, which is why we don't have solutions right now. And we're, we're, we're very close to where we were four years ago on that. Um, I've worked with, uh, Councilwoman Park Shaw, with, um, Markeah from the Greater Kansas City Coalition in homelessness and pretty much every, um, homeless provider in the city. Collectively, we know that we need permanent places for people to be, that they need wraparound resources and that they need a place and time to heal through the trauma of being homeless so that they are able to transition back into working or into something that is not living on the street. Now, we can't afford to do brick and mortar versions of that, but we can afford to do versatile, um, refugee-style villages that are functional and that will help these folks get what they need while also being affordable for us as, as a metro and as a city. And I think that we all need to participate in this because every city is having the same struggles.
Thank you.
So in my first term, uh, I spent a significant amount of time, uh, about almost two years or so working on the homeless issue here in Kansas City. And it's not, the answer is not a, it's not a one-size-fits-all, uh, but, but through a year's worth of talking with, uh, over sixty organizations in, in the city that, um, are, you know, housing or that are homeless professionals, that are housing professionals. We actually, uh, did a community needs assessment and asset mapping. And we established a, uh, what we call Zero KC, a plan for homelessness in Kansas City. It's a five-year strategy that will, uh, has mu- many action steps in there. And so ultimately, as was said, we do not have enough money. So we actually have applied for several grants. We've applied for state money, federal money, as well as Kansas City is making the investment. Uh, one of the programs, uh, that I'm excited about that we have had success is called Cleanup KC, that we are hiring, uh, homeless individuals to work for the city because we're struggling to hire, uh, our, some of our, uh, maintenance staff anyway, so that it's a win-win for us. And we, in that program, we have been able to house, uh, twelve individuals through that program, uh, and giving them the wraparound services that they need. So it's programs and creative, out-of-the-box thinking like that, that will allow us to be successful and help our, our individuals who are experiencing houselessness. and help our our individuals who are experiencing houselessness. And I will continue to work on that. Thank you.
Uh, well, yeah, the uh Councilman Park Shaw, a a lot of credit to to you again on on uh on the efforts to to get to our plan, Zero KC. I know you hear plans and plans and plans, but this is an action plan, Zero KC. Um, followed a a year's worth of of work from city staff, community partners, uh agencies who provide a lot of services for the homeless community. Uh, really came together to produce a, I think, a a actual plan. We've hired staff uh to to help address this very, very desperate issue. Um, but one of the biggest things that uh out of that entire process, that year's worth of of effort that was identified as a great need is we have um no short-term uh no short-term housing uh that is low barrier to entry. So we don't have emergency housing um for folks who are experiencing homelessness. Um, that is low barrier to entry. We have a lot of, we have a lot of shelters that um exist throughout the community, but we don't have one place where a person can come in and 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 get clean. Um, get off of uh to to address the addiction that they might be uh challenged with or to to uh get the healthcare that they need onsite. Um, the reality is that no one is going to be able to to fight off their uh addiction disorder um that in the woods. And so we need to invest in a low-barrier emergency shelter for everyone uh so that we can actually uh start the process of creating a Housing First policy. Our Zero KC plan is the first step towards doing that, and we're committed to implementing that plan.
Okay, moving right along. Very simple question here, again, from the public. How would you help promote environmental policies? And Mr. Bunch, we'll have you start that off. We'll go to Ms. Park Shaw, and we'll end with you, Ms. Dastro.
Yeah, I'm uh not just promoting it, but 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 passing great policy. Uh, I was a lead sponsor on the adoption of our Climate Resiliency Plan. Uh, so the Climate Protection and Resiliency Plan, what I believe is probably the most progressive climate action plan in the country right now. Um, it's not good enough to just implement it. We need to be very uh to pass it. We also have to implement it. And so uh one of the first steps this council took um with uh my sponsorship with some of my colleagues uh was to adopt more uh stricter standards for uh energy conservation codes uh when when building new housing. And so uh something that's actually getting a little bit of pushback in Jeff City, but we're, I'm very proud that we, I think, took that leap to be one of the most progressive energy conservation codes in the country. Um, additionally, we uh passed a belief, uh I I keep using superlatives because it's simply true. Uh, passed, I think, one of the most um progressive, thoughtful, green stormwater infrastructure plans. Um, you don't think a lot about sewers and stormwater when we talk about climate change, but in a changing climate, we have to be more resilient. And part of that is creating infrastructure um that that helps hold back the water, but creates great public spaces in the process and keeps uh our water clean, actually helps clean it up. Um, so very proud to to do those three things, plus a whole bunch of other stuff like investing in new public transportation as well. So uh I'm a leader on this front and and very excited to continue that that effort in the next four years.
Uh, great question. Uh, you know, so I'm gonna piggyback off of uh Councilman Bunch because I do think that we uh have have done some monumental things in this council. Uh, the the couple of things that that weren't mentioned already, uh this council also passed um the legislation and funding for uh all uh Kansas City residents to have recycle carts. To have recycle bins, litter recycle bins. Uh, so not only will this allow us to uh be able to uh recycle our uh paper, our our goods, but also um it's, we're also investing in the education component that um that is involved in that as well. And those will be rolled out uh in, starting in April. Uh, homeowners will start to see the recycle carts. Um, you know, our our climate, I think, I think this council has, we have definitely shown that climate is is a an area of concern for us and a priority, and we will continue to do that. Um, you know, with the recycle carts, we're we, because one of the big complaints we've seen is all the litter and trash. Uh, it through the pandemic, ended, the individual households were, have increased their uh trash consumption uh by thirty percent. And so this is an effort to allow us to be able to educate those homeowners, those residents, to be able to reduce their uh their trash, their waste. Um, we also are doing composting as well to try to help manage our um climate. Okay, sorry, ninety seconds. Thank you.
It's okay.
Yes, ninety seconds will be difficult. Um, I I'm very excited that we seem to have a collective understanding as a city that we we really do have to lead and we really do have to push the envelope when it comes to what we can do to mitigate um climate atrocities that are on our horizons. Um, I agree with uh Councilman Park Shaw as well. Um, I, when I was an educator, I taught environmental science. And um I think that we have a lot of room to be able to broaden our abilities to reach the community about these issues. Uh, we have a lot of community centers right now. Uh, the city is investing in green technology and in green energy. I think that there is a collaboration to be had with our community centers where young kids are learning how to repair solar panels. Where young kids are learning, you know, what they can do and how they can be a part to not only be job-ready for green jobs, but also to, you know, help educate their families and educate how educate their households. Um, I think that the city could do a lot more when it comes to the Communications Department to help with that education. Um, I also think it's important that we look at how our um our internal infrastructure works and how can we um how can we be more efficient in our own uses of energy um at a city level? Um, not only have we been working with um a steam village to look at how we could change our city's infrastructure to be more green and sustainable, but also how we could be training up a workforce of Kansas City local kids to help maintain it, because that is a big part of it. And then also partnering with people like Jerusalem Farm, uh bridging the gap. We need to be partnering more with our local organizations because they broaden our ability to do more. And so they're already doing a great job. I think that we need to do more with them.
Alrighty, thank you all. Next question. Our city has two historic dividing lines, the Missouri River and Truce Avenue. What efforts have you made in the past to reach out to fellow citizens on the other side of these divides? And we will start with Ms. Park Shaw, and we will then go to Mr. Bunch and then end with you, Ms. Dastro.
Well, uh definitely, I'm a collaborator at heart. Uh, you you may have noticed I wasn't uh logged in right at six thirty. That's because I was coming back from uh north and almost Liberty, really, a Northland event, uh Northland Strong event. Um, trying to uh, you know, work uh collaboratively there. Uh, but definitely, I uh and and you will see many of the the pieces of legislation that I have sponsored um or co-sponsored uh is done collaboratively with um many of my colleagues in every district. And um that is the commitment that I have made uh to ensure that I'm working with, you know, closely, definitely with Councilman Bunch uh as well as our uh, you know, all the districts, six, six first, second. And uh ultimately, I think that is, that is not only what my fifth district residents need, but all of, we are one Kansas City. And so definitely there, the truce dividing line uh is is significant. Um, I think that the work that we did or the work that was done for redistricting, I think uh will have some impact on that, but I think definitely we need to continue to do that. I'm I'm hopeful that uh the colleagues, the council members that come into this next council will be just as collaborative um and working together because that's what our city needs for us uh to to continue to thrive and and do great things. Thank you.
Yeah, I um I believe very strongly in in equity and recognizing that every district has its own unique needs. I don't believe in division by six, uh which is often the effort that that folks make to 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 try to to try to make um to try to spread the the capacity of the city around. And I believe that we should be looking at uh history and 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 the history that uh that that the harmful effect of redlining that still persists today. Uh, and ensuring that the disinvestment that has has continued and in particular on our east side uh that we address those issues. And sometimes that means saying that the fourth district doesn't get as much funding, doesn't get as much support, doesn't get as much capacity, and we're working with our third and fifth district uh council folks to make sure that we're we're addressing those long-term negative effects uh that that continue to persist to this day that are the result of of redlining, of systemic racism and and white supremacy. And so making sure that we recognize that first and foremost and make and and build policy that is truly built around equity. Um, north of the river, we've got to continue to recognize that that the that the challenges there are different than other parts of the city. And I continue to be a collaborator with great organizations like Northland Neighborhoods. Um, and we'll continue to to work with the neighborhoods there as well to ensure that um the needs, the needs are met as well. Um, uh, it's a changing, changing face of the Northland, and I'm gonna continue to be be a big supporter there.
Ms. Dastro?
Thank you. Um, I spent a lot of time up north, so I'll start there. It is twenty-seven percent of the new fourth district. Um, the folks of the Northland um are having a hard time because they have not seen either of their representatives more than, you know, a handful of times in four years, and that's been very felt in the Northland. Um, they are concerned because the majority of the fourth district is south of the river. Um, and yet uh they still exist up there, and I think that it's very important that we honor um all of our communities that we represent uh to help foster better relationships when we will look at the river as being a dividing line. I think that it helps when our leadership is 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 making sure that they are um equally giving uh giving time to the people that they represent. So I think that that could really heal a lot of those relationships. As far as truce, um not only do I believe in equity, I've spent the past fifteen years working toward a more equitable um area around truce. As I said, Truce Market Collective, our our entire purpose for existing is to bring um communities east and west of truce together so that they don't feel um they don't feel pigeonholed into the past, but that they have the um support to feel empowered to write the future together. And I think that that's been a really powerful thing to watch as communities do come together when they're provided an opportunity. Um, and I've been just, I couldn't, I could talk about that all day long, but it's 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 been such an incredible impact to watch what we've been able to do along the truce corridor, um given the history of Kansas City.
All right, thank you all. I think we'll end with a couple of questions on transportation. How do y'all feel about that? All right, so this first one we will talk about is what is the right balance of paid versus free parking in downtown Kansas City? Please speak on both parking lots and parking meters. And to start us off with that, will be Mr. Bunch.
Uh, yeah, parking meters is everyone's favorite subject. You know, the reality is that that downtown isn't what it used to be. Um, and and other parts of the community are experiencing high levels of of demand. And as we move into the future of investing in more public transportation and and realize that good climate policy requires us to think a little bit more broadly than um than 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 automobiles, quite honestly. We have to think about ways to manage our parking, whether it's on street or in garages. And um and we, and ways to encourage people to use public transportation as we, you know, the expansion of the streetcar is happening right now. Um, just out my, out my window. And so as we, as we do that more and as downtown becomes more in demand, we've got to manage that demand. Uh, and one way to do that is through parking meters, and that's something that we've been investing in. And um it's parking meters help us circulate parking. Um, one, one thing that we have seen over and over again is if you don't have strong enforcement and coupled with uh a a potentially a a market-based, uh demand-based uh metering system. People leave their cars parked all day, and that's unfair to the restaurant owner or the small business owner who uh may require, may rely on that space for customers to come visit them. But um we have to have the right balance, and I think that balance is based on where high demand is and and where short-term versus long-term uh balances out. And so I will continue to to work towards solid policy. And there are, there's, there's great best practices that exist out there, and we're working towards those best practices.
Ms. Dastro?
Um, so I don't know anybody who's a fan per se of paid parking. Do you recognize the necessity, not only from a revenue stream standpoint, but a lot of the practical reasoning for um needing to circulate cars in and out? Um, I think that as we are moving toward more paid parking, we really need to understand the impact that it will have on small business. Um, I was in the West Bottoms not too long ago, and all of a sudden, one day, all of their free lot was a paid lot. And they got an earful from all of their customers, and it was just a big change that, you know, was kind of thrust upon them. Parking is a sensitive issue. I have four children, so I don't get to ride bikes or scooters when I'm hauling them to and fro. Um, and so I think that parking is always going to be a necessity. I think that we should work to accommodate um parking when we can and also make sure that people who don't have driveways always have access to parking in their neighborhoods, especially our elderly um community. Um, but I think that when we are making changes to communities like instilling all part, all paid parking, that we need to be having those uh conversations with that community and figuring out how that might negatively impact them that we're not aware of because we don't live there. Um, I think that these things will continue to, especially if there is downtown baseball, I would imagine there's a lot of money to be made by parking and people will figure out how to do that. Um, but I think that the the rate of at which we change these things needs to be maybe slowed a little bit so that the community feels like they can maybe have part of or partake in the conversation and just not get hit out of left field with so much drastic change all at once.
Ms. Park Shaw?
Uh, thank you. Um, definitely, uh parking is a sensitive subject. Uh, and uh, you know, definitely, I think as as we uh continue to address uh the growing needs and changes of of our downtown uh and even up through uh midtown area, you know, we need to establish the connectivity and and loo- and look at how that impacts those, uh whether there's the homeowners or the small businesses, as was already said. And so I think uh, you know, unfortunately, I, well, one of the things I do agree with, I don't think anybody wants wants to pay for parking, but it is a necessary evil. And so looking at uh and a a proper way to balance that um is key. You know, unfortunately, you know, we've got some uh parking garage down there that is falling apart, and we we're gonna have to invest. Um, e- especially because Kansas City is doing so many grand things uh with, you know, the NFL draft and uh, you know, I one just has to believe that now with our new airport that we will begin to to see even more conventions coming into Kansas City. And so it's gonna be, it's an area that uh we will definitely have to continue to address. And I think how we do that is by making sure that we engage our business community and our uh residents in the discussion uh so that they're not caught off guard. I think that's maybe one thing that we definitely could could improve as we move forward. Thank you.
I think I saw two little people snatch Mr. Bunch. Mr. Bunch, are you still with us? All right, hello. Oh, it's good to see you guys. So I think we have room for about two more questions. This last one is what should the plan be for transporting thousands of visitors to Arrowhead Stadium and all over the city during the Soccer World Cup that will come in twenty twenty-six? We've heard a lot of ideas about what can happen, um but we would like to hear from you as what should be the plan for transporting thousands of people as they get ready to come to our city for the World Cup in twenty twenty-six? And to start us off with that, let's go to you, Ms. Dastro.
Um, you know, it's it, I sometimes try to imagine what in reality will be like to have that many people in our city for that long a period of time, and and it's hard to wrap my head around. Um, I do believe that we now have some very capable um leadership at our uh at KC ATA, which I think is a little too late. I think that we should have had I think that we should have had much better leadership much sooner because I don't know that we're going to be able to scale our own internal capacity to what we will need. And so I'm not, uh, I, I've never run a bus company, but I would imagine we might call our friends in our neighboring cities and, and borrow some of their buses um and be making sure that we have a workforce here trained and prepared to, to facilitate that. I think the workforce is probably going to be the harder part, uh, because again, I think that, you know, we could probably find buses elsewhere, but we have to make sure that we have a workforce prepared to facilitate. Um, I don't think that we're going to have enough time to build a fixed rail before then. Um, taking, as someone who was a part of the streetcar extension, how long it takes just to get uh a funding mechanism passed, then you have to build it. Um, I think that we're gonna have to uh rely on our transportation experts to uh, to make sure that we are, are staffed and that we are, are are able to perform because all eyes will be on us. So.
All right, Ms. Park Shaw, and then we'll end with you, Mr. Bunch.
Well, you know, I, I like the idea of the e, of a east-west uh streetcar. Uh, I agree. I don't know that we have the time to do that, but I think uh there may be some rail there that we could uh potentially utilize. But uh definitely, you know, that's, it's, I know that it uh is in the forefront of our uh public works uh department and uh ATA, Streetcar Authority, all of those entities I think are already having those discussions. And I look forward to those experts uh coming to us with, with some recommendations. Um, and I think they are leaving no stone unturned. Uh, but definitely it's a, it's a concern that will need to be addressed and, and we're running out of time. So uh, I don't know that I have an answer for, for that, but definitely, you know, definitely I'm open-minded and, and willing to jump in and, and listen to the experts as they come forward. Thank you.
Well, my, my campaign managers just, just left the room. Uh, Helen and Vivian and my son, well, my son Liam is still here. Uh, they got home from dinner and decided to join in. Um, you know, I think that the, the World Cup really gives us an opportunity to, to pilot some great ideas that are coming out of the east-west transit study. Uh, that's a partnership with the city and I've been taking a, a, a big part of that and, and, uh, but it's a partnership with the city, the ATA. Uh, actually Unified Government of Kansas, of Wyandotte County and KU Med and the Streetcar Authority to look at east-west option. We, we know that east-west public transit corridors are sorely lacking. Uh, we keep making great investments in the, the three max lines plus the streetcar expansion. Uh, we need east-west connections. That's what the east-west study is really doing. I think that um, and the corridor is actually looking at um, uh, uh, east-west from KU Med down Thirty-Ninth Street uh all the way out potentially to the stadiums one day. Um, the, I think World Cup gives us an opportunity to pilot some of that. And what does a, a high-frequency bus line look like on, say, Linwood or Thirty-First Street out to the stadiums? Uh, that's something that, that, that I'm already working with, with KC ATA to make sure is, has happened. A rail is not, is not possible before then. Um, but, but what is possible is launching some high, high-capacity buses and doing something new and implementing on a, at least on a pilot basis, some of the recommendations of the east-west transit study. So I'm really looking forward to it. I think it's an exciting opportunity.
Alrighty, sounds good. Alrighty, so I think we are about done. Um, as it is seven forty-four, so we will now move into our closing remarks. Um, so after I give this little um tidbit about closing remarks, I will relinquish my stand so that I can try to get some sleep tonight. Um, but I want to thank um, thank, um, thank all of the candidates for participating and allowing me to be moderator for this forum. Also, would love to thank um, the, the League Women of Voters for allowing me to um be here and moderate this as well. I'm certainly appreciative of it. Um, so candidates, it is time for your two-minute closing remarks. Um, you can take a moment to gather your thoughts. Um, again, I want to personally thank all of you for also joining us. Um, also giving us an opportunity to learn about you and your plans if you are selected, elected to be um next in city council to represent. Uh, so we thank you again. Um, I'm going to uh let you guys gather your closing remarks. Again, you'll have two minutes for that and um let me see, also want to make sure um give you this also. So also, we want to thank the audience, um, and also those that submitted their public questions um so you can answer. Um, April fourth primary election, just want to give that reminder. Again, this is recorded. Um, and this forum will be available on the league's website. That website is L W V K C dot org. Um, and so you can take a moment to share this as well um on Facebook and also Nextdoor and other favorite social media channels, if you will. And also you can remember that for the complete voting and candidate information, that is also available on the website. L W V K C dot org. And you can also do vote four-one-one dot org, which will go live May seventeenth. So I thank you again. Um, and you guys still have a couple of moments to gather your thoughts and we will hear your closing remarks. Uh, and I will relinquish my stand. Have a good night.
All right. Uh, I am a retired librarian, so we are going to take your closing remarks in alphabetical order, starting with Mr. Bunch. Thank you.
Um, thank you so much and thanks to the, to the League of Women Voters and, and Alpha Cap Alpha. I know uh my colleague Councilwoman Park Shaw is a, is a proud member um of Alpha Cap Alpha. But um, just, you know, when I started this journey to, four years ago, almost now, uh, over four years ago, when I first started my first campaign, first time I had run for anything. Um, I, I have no ambitions for, for higher political office. I know politicians say that all the time or, or coy about it, but I really don't. I believe that local government is a place where you have the opportunity to, to, to improve your community and, and do things that really have a direct impact on people's quality of life. So it's, it's things as simple as, you know, the second you walk out your door, um, you know, what does your neighborhood look like? Uh, how are your sidewalks? Do you have crosswalks? Is there a school in your community? Um, is there a park that your kids can play at? Um, can your kids get to the park safely? Um, is there a, is there public transportation that serves your home, gets you to work, gets you to necessities? And so those are things that are really decided upon it down at, at Eleventh and Oak. And um, I believe that local government is just an amazing place that, that um, really does have a direct impact on the community. And I believe in cities. I think cities have so many of the answers to the biggest challenges we face, including one that was discussed a lot tonight. Uh, well, I had two. Um, one is breaking down the systemic barriers that have created inequities in our community through history of racism. Um, cities have an opportunity to, to lay the groundwork there and um, and then additionally in climate change. Uh, we've done a lot of fantastic work over the last four years. Uh, I'm proud to have supported things like zero-fare public transportation and investments in sidewalks and, and continued access to, to the community in which I serve. Um, so I asked for your vote on April fourth and I'm really looking forward to serving another four years with my uh, one of my colleagues, Councilwoman Park Shaw, who will be talking to you shortly. Uh, thank you again so much and I look forward to, to seeing you out there on the campaign trail and, and always come via, feel free to visit my office. Thank you.
We now go to Chrissy. Chrissy.
Thank you. Um, you know, there's really nothing that I would rather do than go and be a public servant uh in, in my community. It's what I have spent uh the entirety of my, my life here in Kansas City doing. And before that, when we were in the military, um, caring for people is, is, I feel like in my DNA. Uh, I, I've had these opportunities since I was a child. Um, four generations of women in a house that took care of everybody who had fallen on hard times. You learn young and you get good at it. Um, I'm really tired of, of solvable problems in our communities being ignored because of a lack of connection or apathy or just, you know, not wanting to tackle the hard things. These problems don't go away if we ignore them. They persist and sometimes they get worse, like our, our houseless issues that we have. I'm ready to go and be a full-time council person dedicated to this community, bringing not only my time and talents dedicated to the people that I serve, but also the collective body of organizations that I've worked with in this city for fifteen years. And with them, I've accomplished really difficult things. We've moved mountains together. And I know that we can do this for our communities and that is what I will be there, working with you, being a partner with you at City Hall. You won't have to wait for something to go awry for me to show up. You'll see me regularly. You'll know that I care because I'll be in your communities, getting to know you and learning how I can help make it better. I do that now all the time like it's my full-time job. It's not. Um, but I'm known as somebody you call when you need to solve a problem. And so I want to do that full-time. I'm very good at it. And you won't find anyone better than me or who loves you more than I do.
Thank you. Uh, Rihanna Park Shaw.
Thank you so much. Uh, thank you to the League of Women Voters. Thank you to Alpha Cap Alpha Sorority Incorporated. Uh, you know, uh, the members know that in, in May nineteen ninety, I made a commitment to be of service to all mankind. And it has been an honor to serve in this first four years, uh, doing things like um having COVID vaccinations and, and food giveaways. Uh, my Operation Backpack Event where we have given away over ten thousand uh backpacks and school filled with school supplies and computers and tablets. Uh, actually doing rental and utility assistance events to keep uh i- individuals in their homes, families in their homes uh to prevent them from being homeless. Uh, in addition to all of the legislation, the transformational legislation that we have been able to pass. And I will tell you, I'm just getting started. So it has been an honor to serve and I look forward to four more years and uh hope and pray that uh we have a fabulous council that will be able to uh rally together and collaborate together to continue to move this city forward. Um, I want to encourage everybody to make sure that um you don't just go to the polls yourself, take ten other folks with you. Unfortunately, in the local elections, we, we see that voter turnout is low. Uh, we have some uh important candidates on the ballot in addition to some important initiatives. And we want to get as many people as there's uh as possible. But thank you so much for the opportunity to answer your questions. You guys had great questions tonight. If my office can be of service to you, please feel free to reach out uh to my office and I'm looking forward to four more years. Thank you so much. God bless.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us on this forum. As Christelle said, uh, they, it will be available uh through the league's website. And on March seventeenth, St. Patrick's Day, when you come home from the parade, you can put in your address on vote four-one-one and see your ballot and read uh, read the candidates' responses to those questions and uh decide who you want. You can take that listing into the polls with you. Us, uh, so you only have to make the decision once. And uh, we will be having candidate forums for all the at-large candidates also that everyone gets to. So you residents of the fourth and fifth district, you have uh three more four more forums to watch. They're all listed on the league's website. Uh, share what you've learned uh at this forum. Talk to your friends. I agree with Rihanna Park Shaw. Uh, get everyone out there to the polls because if our vote wasn't valuable, why do they keep trying to take it away from us? Thank you and good night.
Amen to that.